The Plant Commission Public Meeting for February 3rd, 2025 to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Imig, would you please call roll?
Jarvis.
Here.
Miles Long.
Here.
Tom Curris. Chris Rack.
Here.
Bob Kocan.
Here.
Gary Imig present.
Tom Anderson.
Here. Minutes of the Plant Commission Public Meeting of January 6th, 2025. Pleasure of the Board.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Rack.
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry six zero. First item on the agenda, Plant Commission Case 2521 BP Gas Station Quick Run Convenient Mart. General location 5601 US Highway 30 Burr Street Crossing Lot 4. Petitioner Lucky Business, Inc., represented by DVG Team, Inc., James Huss, Jr., Professional Engineer. Request primary approval of a US 30 Commercial Corridor Overlay District Development Plan. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm James Huss with DVG Team here with both members of Lucky Business Incorporated, as well as Ted Roan, the principal architect for the building, the convenience store that we're proposing today. The team is here tonight following up on our study session presentation last month. Told, as you just mentioned, the preliminary overlay district public hearing regarding the reconstruction and rebranding of an existing but not operational gas station located at the southwest corner of US 30 and Burr Street, otherwise known as 5601 US 30. It is Lot 4 in the Burr Street Crossing subdivision. As illustrated in your handouts and our previously submitted materials, Lucky Business intends to perform a ground-up reconstruction of the property. The existing store, the existing tanks, the existing car wash and all pavement will be removed. While being removed and replaced, the driveways will remain in almost identical locations that they are today, almost to the foot in width and location, and the site circulates identically as the previous use did. The car wash will not be replaced. It'll be demolished, and the new station will provide 14 fueling locations, two to three EV charging stations, and a much more modern 4,600 square foot convenience store. I'm happy to dive into any more particulars of the property and the proposed development, but I know we did that last month, and I'm happy to say that almost nothing has changed since then. We've received very few comments on the engineering plans we submitted to town, save some lighting comments, which we have removed some fixtures around the exterior of the parking lot to strictly adhere to the town's requirements. With that, given that we did go into such depth last month before you all, I won't belabor the point, but of course, we're still happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I will. I do have some correspondence from East Engineering, which I'll read into the record. Dear Mr. Anderson, references made to the BP Gas Station Quick Run Convenient Mart Development Plan submitted for review and consideration by the Sherreville Plant Commission. Based on the application of the Town of Sherreville Subdivision Control and Stormwater Ordinances, the site development plan submitted related to sanitary sewer stormwater and water utilities for BP Gas Station Quick Run Convenient Mart is in compliance for consideration by the Plant Commission for primary approval of a US 30 Commercial Corridor Overlay District Plan in Plant Commission Case 2521. Thank you for your consideration, Neil Simstad. And he did have an addendum that the lighting did meet the code. So, questions from Board members before I open this matter to the floor? At this point, I'm going to open this matter to the floor. Anyone in the audience with any comments regarding Plant Commission Case 2521 BP Gas Station? Any comments from the floor? Hearing no comments from the floor, we'll close the floor, bring it back to the Board.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of small questions.
Yes, Mr. Jarvis.
Are you planning on leaving just a couple of the lights on at night in case somebody does want to fuel along US 30?
Um, so I expect that...
At the pumps, I should think.
Yeah, so I expect the canopy lighting will remain on. Actually, part of the lighting change that we made eliminated the border, if you will, off Burr Street and US 30, which really only leaves the canopy lights and two small fixtures, one at the northwest building corner and one southeast, and they're pretty generously situated away from the southern property line. So, well, I don't know the specifics of how the lighting will operate, and I'm fairly certain the canopy lights themselves, which are now really the lighting that is on the property, would remain on.
I would assume that you'd want to do the canopies and maybe a couple of pumps at night when you're closed.
Yeah, the canopy has fixtures pretty much 360 degrees around the canopy. The eastern and western ends are going to be turned down a little bit so we don't spill over to the property lines adjacent to us, but I'd expect those to remain lit 24 hours. Well, at night, excuse me.
Is there an air filling station and that out?
There will be, yes.
Okay. And I assume that's the dumpster just to the west of the main building?
That's correct, and it will be congruent with the finish of the convenience store.
And there is screening on the south and the west side with landscaping. Other questions, comments?
One question.
Mr. Imig?
What did you say you guys are doing with the underground storage tank?
The underground storage tanks, while they will be replaced with brand-new tanks in very similar location to where they sit now, which is kind of east-northeast of the convenience store, but the tanks will be 100% removed and the soil around are remediated.
Why do you have to remove them? Is...do you know that they're leaking?
Sorry? They're not leaking, but they are aged, so. Like I said, this...
Sir, yeah. If you can come up and please identify yourself for the record.
Yes, I'm one of the owners, Shmear Manhany. I reside in St. John, and me and my brother, we are putting this plan together on this. When we purchased the property, the premium line wasn't working, so it had a leak around the pump to be replaced, but we did not want to fix it or replace it or open it again, so we just never did anything. The line was shut down for a while. The premium wasn't available at the location, but the tanks were not leaking. Tanks were all in good shape, and we submitted the applications to item, and they all know, and we got approval from them to get the tanks removed and replaced.
Other comments, questions?
Just a quick last question. You have the tank monitoring systems on your tanks anyway, right?
Yes, yes, yes. And they were compliant the day we got them.
Okay. Yeah. Because that alerts you right away.
Yeah, and we...there was always a couple, some inches of gas still remaining that was pulled out, so there it's completely not, no product in the tank right now.
Anything further? Anything from staff?
No comments.
Course of action?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rack.
Plant Commission Case 25-2-1 BP Gas Station Quick Run Convenient Mart. General location 5601 US Highway 30 Burr Street Crossing Lot 4. Petitioner Lucky Brandon Incorporated, represented by DVG Team Incorporated, James Huss, Jr., PE. Request primary approval of a US 30 Commercial Corridor Overlay District Development Plan. I make a motion to approve pursuant to all federal, state, local regulations, and fees are kept current to the town.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kocan. Mr. Imig, would you please call roll?
Bill Jarvis.
Yes.
Miles Long.
Yes.
Chris Rack.
Yes.
Bob Kocan.
Yes.
Gary Imig, yes. Tom Anderson.
Yes, so approved, six zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, Plant Commission Case 2522 6919 West Lincoln Highway. General location 6919 West Lincoln Highway, CSK Edition Lot 1 excluding the south 900 feet. Petitioner CSK Property LLC, represented by Town of Sherreville, James M. Gorman, Town Manager. Request rezone from C3 Highway Commercial and R1 Residential to all C3 Highway Commercial. Mr. Bartholomew, do we have proofs of publication on all these matters?
We do, and if you don't mind, I'll just state that across the board, the next four...
Yeah, there are four matters.
Yeah, we're going on publication.
They're all...thank you.
And notice.
Good evening, Mr. Gorman.
Hi, Mr. Anderson, Board members. We talked about this at the study session, as the attorney said. I'm going to basically be talking about all four. Of course, they'll have to be voted on separately, but the diagram on the overhead shows CSK property right by Route 30, so it'd be the northern part of that property marked as Lot 1. We...the town purchased the rear 900 feet of that property, so excluding the hashed area. The property south of that we purchased, as well as the property south of the one next to it, which is Mr. Kortenhoven's property. There's a picture of it there, and he just went to it. So, the first case, the first one on the agenda here is Item B, is what you're looking at there. So, before we purchased it, all that property, with the exception of the northern 350 feet, was R1. The property north of the R1 was C3. So, when we bought it, it's going to be part of the Iliana Park that we bought in 2016, which is institutional zoning. So, it'll be part of Iliana. So, what we're left with after we bought it was institutional, R1, and C3. The property owner wanted to see if we could make all of his property that he has left, instead of having two zones, make it all C3. So, that is that first case. So, that's what we're looking for tonight for Item B, is to rezone the C3 and the R1 into all C3. And then same for the property to the east of that, which is on the screen now. That's the second property, just to the east of the one we just talked about. Same thing, where he was left with two zones, C3, which is by ordinance, and then a little piece of R1. So, part of our sales, when they were looking to sell the property, to see if they could do the same thing, so of course, we obliged, and that's why we're here tonight. That is...
6919.
I'm jumping around a little bit. That's Item D. And in the back, too, we're just looking to zone it from R1 to institutional.
So, 6919, the part closest to Route 30 and 6909 are both owned by separate entities, and you're looking to clean up the little bit that they have, that they didn't sell, to make consistent zoning, all C3, and the remaining 900 feet on both lots is going to be owned by the town for the park?
That is correct.
Will be zoned institutional?
Yeah, because if they were left with a R1 in the middle, there'd be no access to it for one. It just makes sense.
Yeah. Housekeeping matter.
Exactly.
Basically, yeah.
You got it.
Questions from Board members before I open this matter to the floor? At this point, I'm going to open these matters to the floor. Anyone in the audience with any questions or comments? If you could step forward and state your name. Any comments from the floor? No comments from the floor? We'll close the floor, bring it back to the Board. Questions? Course of action?
I just have a quick question. So, each one, we do have to...
We have to vote on each one individually.
Okay, all right. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rack.
Plant Commission Case 25-2-2 6919 West Lincoln Highway. General location 6919 West Lincoln Highway, CSK Edition Lot 1 excluding the south 900 feet. Petitioner CSK Property LLC, represented by Town of Sherreville, James M. Gorman, Town Manager. Request rezone from C3 Highway Commercial and R1 Residential to all C3 Highway Commercial. I make a favorable recommendation. Working good on that one?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion, and a second by Mr. Long. Mr. Imig, would you please call roll?
Bill Jarvis.
Yes.
Miles Long.
Yes.
Chris Rack.
Yes.
Bob Kocan.
Yes.
Gary Imig, yes. Tom Anderson.
Yes, so this will be forwarded to the Town Council with a six oh favorable recommendation. Now, moving on to Plant Commission Case 2523, part of 6919 West Lincoln Highway. Pleasure of the Board.
Full, full...okay. Plant Commission Case 25-2-3, part of 6919 West Lincoln Highway. General location, part of 6919 West Lincoln Highway, south 900 feet of CSK Edition Lot 1. Petitioner Town of Sherreville, James M. Gorman, Town Manager. Request rezone from R1 Residential to Institutional. I make a favorable recommendation.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Mr. Imig, would you please call roll?
Bill Jarvis.
Yes.
Miles Long.
Yes.
Chris Rack.
Yes.
Bob Kocan.
Yes.
Gary Imig, yes. Tom Anderson.
Yes. Will be forwarded to the Town Council with a six oh favorable recommendation. Plant Commission Case 2524 6909 West Lincoln Highway. Pleasure of the Board.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rack.
Plant Commission Case 25-2-4 6909 West Lincoln Highway. General location 6909 West Lincoln Highway excluding the south 900 feet. Petitioner Lincoln Properties LLC, represented by Town of Sherreville, James M. Gorman, Town Manager. Request rezone from C3 Highway Commercial and R1 Residential to all C3 Highway Commercial. I make a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Mr. Imig, would you please call roll?
Bill Jarvis.
Yes.
Miles Long.
Yes.
Chris Rack.
Yes.
Bob Kocan.
Yes.
Gary Imig, yes. Tom Anderson.
Yes. Go to the Town Council with a favorable recommendation of six oh. Plant Commission Case 2525 6909 West Lincoln Highway.
Mr. Chairman. Plant Commission Case 25-2-5 6909 West Lincoln Highway. General location, south 900 feet of 6909 West Lincoln Highway. Petitioner Town of Sherreville, James M. Gorman, Town Manager. Request rezone from R1 Residential to Institutional. I make a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Mr. Imig, would you please call roll?
Bill Jarvis.
Yes.
Miles Long.
Yes.
Chris Rack.
Yes.
Bob Kocan.
Yes.
Gary Imig, yes. Tom Anderson.
Yes. Will be forwarded to the Town Council with a six oh favorable...
Thank you, gentlemen.
Recommendation. Thank you. Moving on, Commission Business Findings of Fact, Plant Commission Case 24126 Bank of America. Pleasure of the Board.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Rack.
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carry six zero. Plant Commission Case 24127, First Federal Plaza Edition, Lot 2. Pleasure of the Board.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Rack.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kocan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carry six zero. Any correspondence? With that, we are adjourned. We will... Location 790 West Lincoln Highway, Klein Commons Lot 1. Petitioner Grit and Grind Holdings LLC, represented by DVG Team, Inc., James Huss. Request US 30 Commercial Corridor Overlay District Development Plan Review. Good evening again.
Good evening again. For this presentation, I'm here representing Grit and Grind LLC. John Wilson is one of the partners of Grit and Grind. He's here tonight, and Ted Roan of Roan &amp; Associates is also doing this building, which is a retrofit. Team here tonight is presenting a repurposing of the currently closed BMO Harris Bank Building at 790 West Lincoln Highway, otherwise known as Lot 1 of the Klein Commons Commercial subdivision. This is at the northwest corner of US 30 and Klein Avenue. Some of you may know or recall that myself and Grit and Grind were here presenting to the BZA in late summer 2024, requesting a variance of use to allow a drive-through business establishment at this location within the overlay district. That variance did receive a favorable recommendation, was then approved by the Town Council. Since then, Grit and Grind has closed on the property, and both they and I are excited to present the work that's been done since late summer last year to today. Grit and Grind intends to bring a Scooter's Coffee establishment to this location. While the name to Northwest Indiana might be a bit unfamiliar, Scooter's Coffee is actually a well-established brand that was founded in Nebraska in 1998, has currently over 800 locations nationwide, and if their website is accurate today, 881 today. Grit and Grind is the team charged with bringing this brand to Northwest Indiana, and their first location in St. John is weeks, if not days, away from opening. It's directly across from Lakes Central High School, if anybody cares to venture that way and check it out. Their name fits their model, their desires for their customers to scoot in and scoot out. Their stores are exclusively drive-through business. There's no walk-up and no inside ordering. The building modifications consist of demolishing the existing bank canopy, eliminating the angular protrusion that is on the southeast face of the existing bank building. The roof will be modified, but the same rectangular footprint of the BMO building will remain. There then will be a protrusion added on the northwest face, which is where the drive-through pickup will be held. The site itself will only be very, very lightly modified. If we could scroll to the site plan, please? Essentially, the only improvements to the site will be slightly modifying the drive-through area. The BMO site had a path around that to circle back. We're just changing it so that we can incorporate a screen dumpster enclosure, as well as two 88 parking spaces. The parking provided on the site is minimal, both by ordinance and also because, again, this is a drive-through-only establishment. The only people that will be parking here will be employees of the business. Including in your packets, and we've been scrolling through here, are illustrations of both the existing building and the proposed retrofit, what it will look like after it's done. Scooter's Coffee locations typically operate under 900 square foot freestanding buildings at just under 1,600 square feet. The only change to this building is as the brands Northwest Indiana operations grow, they do intend on repurposing some of the backspace for a management office and then a small conference room to hold manager meetings on an infrequent basis. So, the building square footage is a little oversells what is actually needed for the property. On the exterior, all but the outside bank island will be demolished and paved flush with a drive-through pickup lane and then a bypass lane. The developers do plan on maintaining the functionality of that exterior island in the event they do find an ATM partner that may want to just have a freestanding ATM where that's all that will be offered. The drive-through lane can accommodate 11 queued vehicles within its stripe limits and another two beyond that before cars would then potentially cross the property line into the rest of Klein Commons, which the brand, and I hope you agree, is a very, very adequate amount of space to store vehicles waiting to pick up their coffee. In conjunction with this petition for the study session, the team has submitted all these materials, as well as a complete engineering set, to the town's engineer for review, which is ongoing. Ted Roan is here. If you have any more specific questions about the building, with that, I feel...I'm open to any questions members have.
So, the triangular vestibule of the existing bank is coming off?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then... the whole canopy will be gone?
Yes.
The whole drive-through canopy? But with the opportunity possibly down the road for using it for an ATM?
Yeah, that's correct. I didn't know at this time if there's any partners involved or any talks, but the goal is to leave that, the bollards and the electrical connections and telecommunications connections all still piped into the building to provide power and communication if somebody were to come along.
So, the existing green area... will just be re...redone with some landscaping?
That's correct. Yeah, with the footprint changing and just the natural course of construction, we did submit landscaping plan revision to the site.
And then the monument sign right at...at the southeast corner?
Yes, so that's very, very similar to where BMO had their monument sign. It looks like that was taken away at some point. We will be repurposing the connections out to light that monument sign, but actually shifting it just a little bit to the west to fully comply with your 10-foot for property lines ordinance, and the previous sign was actually in a drainage cement, so I figured we would rectify that.
Denise, the signage meets the ordinance? Questions from other Board members?
Mr. Chairman, I do have two questions. One, you're not going to have any inside service whatsoever?
Zero.
Okay, because I was going to recommend sidewalks along Klein Avenue, but if you're not doing that, doesn't matter, and wouldn't serve a purpose at that point. Now, one thing lays on, as well as Tom Coros from the BZA to the Plant Commission, and one issue that was brought up was garbage being blown around to the neighbors to the north. Your dumpster, where is that located?
So, the dumpster is that shaded area you can see on this screen. It will be about just northeast of the northeast, the northernmost corner.
Okay. And I would impress upon you to make sure those lids are kept closed, because that was one of the big gripes of the neighbors to the north. Other than that, it looks like a great development for the corner.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Mr. Huss, I'm just, so is there a bypass lane around the drive-through on the south? I guess it would be the south side. Is that all green, or is it real tiny, or?
No, so that will be, there will be no bypass for the majority of the drive-through. The, while it's not illustrated on this print, the order board will be more or less right at the start, or at least the clearance bar will be right at the start where people would enter the drive-through, but this site does not have a bypass line.
But how do the employees, like, they back out?
They would just need to essentially wait for a law or just go in the drive-through. That's just a peculiarity of this being a retrofit.
Okay. So, the only way out is through the drive-through?
Correct. But obviously, in keeping with this being, there's no customer traffic that would be reasonably doing that. Well, no, nobody going in and coming out and wanting to leave.
Are there plans to serve sandwiches, breakfast sandwiches?
The brand does have a very, very light food menu. I have been to their website, kind of similar to a Starbucks, that style of offerings.
What kind of hours will they have?
5:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Any other questions, concerns? Anything from staff?
Nope.
What's your timeline?
We intend, hopefully, to be back similar to the last presentation for our preliminary overlay hearing next month, and then the secondary after that, and I know Grit and Grind is very eager to get underway.
What kind of timeframe once you start construction?
I think we could potentially be looking at end of this year.
Okay. All right, nobody has any concerns? We'll see you then, most likely on March 4th, or March 3rd.
We will be back. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, we are adjourned.